And the last item was an update regarding homelessness issues. She texted and told me she didn't want it built anymore, that she told staff.
Good morning, council members. My name is Chris Shorter. I am the Assistant City Manager, supporting outcomes associated with health, environment, culture, and lifelong learning. As you know, we've invited ECHO here this morning to provide a presentation on the PIT count, the point in time count, held on January 25th. After their presentation and questions that you may have for them, I'd also like to highlight some of the progress we've made since our last work session and give our priority leads an opportunity to provide updates or answer questions as needed as well.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. No, you turned it off.
Okay. Good morning, council members. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Sarah Duzinski. I'm the new Vice President of Quality Assurance with ECHO, and I look forward to working with you all on the issue of homelessness in our community. So this morning, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on the PIT count. And we're, basically today, we're just going to talk about methodology and process. We do not have results yet, but we will get there with you and tell you a little bit about our process to achieve results. So to give anyone background in the room, the PIT count or the point in time count is required by Housing and Urban Development for continuance of care in each community in order to receive HUD funding. So it's an annual census of the Austin-Travis County population experiencing homelessness. And the census contributes to both local and national efforts to end homelessness. So this is happening across the country on one night, January 25th, to really gather numbers and demographic information. It provides a snapshot. Okay, so the objectives of the count are really to get a total number and characteristics of those who are experiencing homelessness in Austin-Travis County, also to understand the sub-populations. Without understanding the sub-populations, we don't really know how best to help them and route them to specific service points. So those include veterans, unaccompanied youth, domestic violence victims. And then we compare those counts to previous years and look at our performance in preventing and ending homelessness. The PIT count also provides information on people's experience with housing and homelessness, their current living situation, age, characteristics, and any self-reported disabilities that may interfere with their ability to maintain housing or employment. And then those who choose to can provide their contact information and be kind of routed to their correct service point and contacted by COC partners for services via outreach staff. Okay. So the methodology, a PIT count is essentially a prevalence estimate of sheltered and unsheltered individuals. This year, for the first time, we used a web-based survey with geolocation capability. It was really nice. It's an anonymous survey, mixture of various types of questions, closed-ended, multiple-choice, open-ended questions. There were 11 items per respondent, and there's an observation-only option as well for individuals who maybe don't want to be disturbed or for whatever reason. We had a six-hour data collection timeframe on January 25th from 3:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And this year, we had 861 volunteer survey administrators and 25 command center staff and volunteers, so a total of 886 deployed. So there are some limitations to the PIT count. These are known in the scientific literature. There's variations in count methodology year-to-year within and across communities. And we know that unsheltered counts are subject to more variation in methodology due to geography, weather, considerations around volunteers. And so first, I'm going to talk a little bit about historical data. The PIT count data for sheltered and unsheltered persons in Austin-Travis County from 2010 to 2019, this gives a little bit of trend data, and you can kind of see that it's held fairly steady. It kind of wobbled down and then came back up in 2019, but it's really varied between 2087 and 2255 in that timeframe. In orange, we have the sheltered persons experiencing homelessness, and in blue, we have unsheltered. And so this is also the 2019 housing inventory count. So you can see that we had, you know, we count the emergency shelters, safe havens, transitional housing, and then permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, housing only, for a grand total of $3199 in 2019. So now, talking about the 2020, what we just did, just talking a little bit about the preparation. As you can imagine, there is a lot of preparation that goes into a PIT count. And in fact, the preparation started before September. We engaged Hyperion to launch the app. We started back in May of 2019, actually, to begin kind of lining it out and starting testing and piloting. So in September, you know, we engaged volunteers, initiated a new volunteer management system, GivePulse, which was also pretty helpful. We updated the volunteer page on the ECHO website. We initiated the new application for counting, selected team leads and sub-leads for each of the 73 sections. It's a lot of logistics. Finalized training details. In October, we began hosting orientations for team leads. We opened up volunteer registration and then finalized our methodology to, for membership council for approval. November, we ensured that those PIT count materials complied with HUD and confirmed our methodology for the housing inventory to count local shelters. And then in the run right up to it, December, lots of training, piloting the app. We piloted the app with an outreach team, and then with our volunteers, we had them beta-test the app in a test environment. We developed a cold-weather contingency plan, began printing our materials and making packets. And then in January, the real ramp-up, training as many volunteers as we could to be team leads, sub-leads, general volunteers. We were able to get volunteers to submit hundreds of test cases into the app for beta-testing, and then coordinated with donation volunteers to kind of sort and organize items, schedule packets for pickup for the implementation on January 25th, 2020. So on the night of the PIT count, ECHO engaged, trained, and deployed, as I mentioned before, 886 volunteers for three-hour shifts between 6:00 a.m., that started between 6:00 a.m., 3:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. You'll note that in 2019, we had 661 volunteers, and in 2018, we had 663 volunteers. So we saw an over 200 volunteer increase from 2019 to 2020. And that's a 34% increase year-to-year. So just to give you an idea how we mapped out the sections, we had different shifts depending on, you know, the level of urban, suburban, rural. Red was urban, black was suburban, and blue was rural. And then we were also able to do some hotspot mapping. So the blue pins on the map represent individuals counted in the 2019 PIT count, and the red squares are individuals identified by Austin Police Department during 2019. So, analysis and follow-up. January and February, we really wanted debrief. We're debriefing with team leads, staff, and volunteers. We're incorporating that feedback from survey results into PIT count process and our manual for next year. We're reviewing and cleaning PIT count data. So as you can imagine, when we get the CSV file from Hyperion, it's not necessarily pristine. There's a lot of cleaning, removing duplicates, and making the dataset analyzable. And then, of course, we do the data analysis and prepare the PIT count report for HUD, and we plan and host a volunteer recognition event. In March, we'll begin preparing outreach materials for press, social media, and sponsors, and share preliminary data on the PIT count with our stakeholders. April 20th, or April 2020, we finalize a PIT count report, any data visualizations and kind of the information sheet. We update the website. We release outreach materials and begin testing the app for 2021. And we just want to thank all of you, the council members, the mayor, the city management staff, volunteers, the media, for all of your help and support in the outreach and administration of the 2020 PIT count. We couldn't have done it without you, so thank you. And I also wanted to introduce Melissa Wheeler, our HMIS Director, who has been instrumental in administration and planning of the PIT count. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Greg, Councilor Kassar?
Well, thank you all so much for coming and presenting to us today. I, you know, got a chance to do this myself and definitely saw a lot more volunteers in my area. Really impressive to see about 200 more volunteers. That's 34% more folks. And so my experience was, and I'd be interested in hearing if this is what you all heard back, was that since we had so many more volunteers, we were able to really dig into more areas. So when I've done the PIT count in the past in my area, covering Cameron Road, Anne Rutherford, and North Lamar, and all of the 183 frontage, and all of the convenience store parking lots to check to see if folks are sleeping in their cars, it was really, really hard to be thorough and go into the fields or check every car. But this time, we split into like three or four groups that were able to do each of those. So my, my experience was, we were able to find more folks because we were able to focus more on our area. So my question to y'all has been, is with 200 more volunteers, 34% more people counting, do you suspect or hope that that means that we'll have a more accurate count and potentially actually be able to count more people because we can actually count more of the folks that are there?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is an accurate assessment of the, you know, when you have more data collectors, you can get a more realistic snapshot of the picture, particularly when you're dealing with a population that is mobile and often invisible.
One of the things I wanted to add as well with our PIT app this year was that at headquarters, we were able to kind of watch numbers come in live, and they were actually able to deploy more people to areas that needed more help. It's the first time we've ever been able to have that kind of coordination this year, and it was, it was an incredibly helpful tool to be able to use this year and to continue to learn how to use that in the future.
In this case, that I would, you know, we'll see when the numbers come out here in several weeks, but in my view, us actually getting a number that is higher is a good thing because it means that we would actually be identifying the folks that are actually living in our community instead of, of being ignorant of some of the issues. Actually knowing how many folks are sleeping on our streets or in their cars is important for us to adequately fund the problem, actually address the issue, know where folks actually are, and, and draw down more funds to actually address it. And so I appreciate that we had that increase in volunteers and that that increase in volunteers might mean that you see an increase in the number associated with us actually showing the truth on the ground, and, and I appreciate everybody stepping out to do that.
Thank you.
Councilor Kitchen?
Thank you. Yeah, I thought the app was a really nice, interesting improvement from prior years. I've done it now for about four or five years, but I thought it was good. It seemed to work real well. A question I have is, well, first off, just timeline, what are you all thinking your timeline is for, for getting the results?
So, as mentioned, we're looking to have preliminary results in March 2020.
Yeah, okay. Do you do, and this may not, well, I wonder to what extent you can do estimates, because I know that when we count, we have to count a person, you know, that we actually talked to. And there were places, of course, that people were still sleeping and may not have wanted to come out of their tents. And so is there, is there a way to do any estimates based on that? I know you can do, you could input an observation, but, but at least the way we were doing it was an observation of a person, not a tent. So is there, is there any, is there any way to account for things we may have observed like that to estimate, to estimate how many more people were actually sleeping outdoors than, than what we're able to actually count?
We do not currently count a tent if we don't see a human being in it, as you mentioned. And so we know that a census or a PIT count is a prevalence estimate, and it is often an underestimate. If you think about it, like, the unsheltered population is sort of the tip of the iceberg. With us having more volunteers, the tip of the iceberg might come up a little bit higher, so we're seeing some more people. But we do know that across the country, it is likely an underestimate of unsheltered populations.
So, but there's not a methodology for estimating, and not a methodology for counting?
Not that HUD recommends at the moment.
Okay, well, I just wondered if that's something we might want to consider locally in the future, because that would be an additional data, data point to Councilmember Kassar's point that would really help us understand. Because I know where we were, there were, there were quite a few tents that we were able to observe that, you know, that people were still sleeping.
Absolutely, yeah. And we are, you know, the census presentation was fantastic, and we have learned a lot from, from those folks this year as well. I think that some of the HUD regulations do hold us back for, from some of that with the methodology that they give us from year to year as to what we can, to use as a, as a count versus an estimate. But we get that, that question a lot in training about, I see a tent, I even maybe hear people inside talking to me. Can I count them? And our general rule is you have to see them, the actual visual.
I guess what I mean is, why couldn't we just add a data element or two for us? You know, even if it doesn't meet HUD requirements, could we not consider that for us here in Austin that would help us? I would just, you know, I don't know, there's, I'm sure there's complexities to that, but we just ask that you guys think about that for next year, because that could provide us some additional level of detail that might be helpful for us here.
Absolutely, and we can take that back to our PIT count planning committee for them to think about. From time to time, we have added local elements to our survey, specifically a couple of years around pets and pets being with people, something very important to the city. And so we have, in the past, added things to it. It's a balance between wanting to add additional data points and also the burden that that causes to asking more questions to individuals in the middle of the night, so.
Yeah, but it's not, if we're just adding a count of a tents, that's very easy to do.
Absolutely. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any, Councilor Tobo?
Yeah, I just want to concur, and I referred to this earlier when we were talking about the census, but I do think maybe having another, a separate sheet where you could note the location of other campsites and the number of tents, so that it's not confused, I don't know where you'd put it in the digital form, because there's not a place, you'd be putting it on somebody else's record. But I, I do think that that information is really helpful in terms of getting locally a broader, broader perspective. So I understand the reasons to not embed it within your questionnaires and within the process. People can be somewhere else, they could be sleeping somewhere else that evening and be counted somewhere else. And so I understand why it shouldn't be part of, of the official data, but I do think it's, it's helpful. And maybe having it on a separate sheet, a real sheet of paper would be, would be one way of handling it.
That's great feedback, absolutely. Yeah, and I think that we can work with our developer, Hyperion, to think about strategies and ways where we could incorporate local estimate counts, maybe in the years prior. Every year, we just try to continue to, to improve on our methodology, and I thank you for those feedbacks.
Councilor Flanagan?
I just wanted to congratulate you on managing a much larger process than you've had in the past and doing it at the same time that you're rolling out new technology and an app. There are some folks in Iowa that may want to consult with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think those are all the questions that you all, do you have another? Okay.
Okay. Thank you again, ECHO. So council members, as you know, the working group formed in the fall involving staff really from across the city that participate and actively work to make sure that we are providing services are here. They are priority leads and available for, for questions. I wanted to also make sure that, that I highlighted the fact that when we were last together at our last work session, the communications team talked about the dashboard, and your offices have received at this point directly communications from the, from that team, getting your input, making sure that you have an opportunity to provide feedback. As you know, the homeless dashboard ultimately will cover key indicators associated with our homeless service delivery system, and I just wanted to make sure we mentioned, mentioned that. In addition to the commitment around the homeless dashboard, we also talked about expanding the Guided Path program and transitioning that program from, from Guided Path to, to an overall encampment strategy. And so thanks to your approval and support and financial support, our providers are now in a position and are beginning to hire staff to help with case management and build capacity around rapid rehousing. That said, we plan to provide an update on both the dashboard as well as the overall encampment strategy or Guided Path program at our next work session on February 18th. Wanted to make sure that I mentioned, mentioned that. In addition to to those two items, and thanks again to your support, we have been working with Barbara Poppy and Associates, her team, over the last few weeks, and plan to hold this afternoon our first conferencing call with providers and our working group and Barbara's, Barb's team. Ultimately, the, the team, and you all are aware of this, will be covering a review of all contracts and grants associated with homelessness in our city. And so our support and the providers' awareness and support of her work will be vitally critically important. And so that, that conversation will happen this after, this afternoon. We are also seeking your authorization this week to negotiate and execute a contract with Matthew Dougherty. That contract is, is in the amount of $95,000. It's an eight-month contract due to end September 30th of this year. So ask for your consideration. As you know, Matthew Dougherty has over 25 years of experience in the public and private sector, specifically dealing with homelessness issues on a nationwide level. He served as the Executive Director of the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness between 2015 and 2019, and just has a breadth of, of experience that we would very much value here in, in our system. So with that said, I wanted to open it up, obviously, for questions and, as needed, invite our priority area leads up to answer as we go.
Are there any questions? I don't think so. Oh, sorry, Councilor Alter.
I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Shorter, or not. I'm wondering if someone can speak to us a little bit about the circumstances surrounding the fire that was reported yesterday on East Anderson.
Absolutely. I'll invite Ken Snipes, as well as Vella, from ARR, as well as Vella Carmen from APH.
Good morning, Vella Carmen, Austin Public Health. I'm going to speak on, to the incident on a service level. We do have street outreach teams, both the host team and the path team through Integral Care, who are aware of individuals that are living out in that area, have had contact with them in the past, and are also making contact with them now. Connecting them to services, several of them have been connected to services or, are already in, in touch with different programs. So the outreach team has been aware of folks living in that area and will continue to do the outreach and connect them as necessary.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. Mayor Portem, manager. This is Ken Snipes, Austin Resource Recovery, and also the priority lead for encampment cleanups or cleanup activities. So one of the things that happened as a result of the fires that we learned about this location and what we plan to do going forward is just to connect with the service providers so that we have a better understanding of where these locations are. Some of them are out of the way, they're not visible from, you know, the normal roadway or from sidewalks or what have you. And this happens to be one of those locations. So now that we are aware of it, what we will do is continue to assess the area and add it to our normal protocols that we are currently operating with across the city.
Thank you. I appreciate you all coming. I requested some more information on this yesterday, so I appreciate you coming. We're hearing from constituents who are concerned about whether, whether the folks are receiving services. I wasn't sure, though, Mr. Shokes, from your answer about who has responsibility for that area, is that city or TechDOT?
I think we're still trying to learn that right now. The area was completely new to me. I think as of yesterday, I was not made aware of it. So we're still working on who has jurisdiction and who will clean that area going forward. I don't know if there's a, an update on that yet.
Okay. And I just wanted to point out, because, you know, folks are expressing concern over the needles, but people use needles for health reasons and for insulin and other stuff, and I believe that's what we were seeing. And so I just wanted to throw that out there, that a lot of folks who are homeless have health issues and are using the needles for, for health reason. That doesn't make them safe to be on the ground, but it, but it is, that is one of the reasons that we may be finding those in those areas. Thank you for, for the update, and if you can provide further updates on both this particular location, either at, through work session or to my office separately, whatever appears most appropriate, I'd appreciate it. And I would like more information about how you're going to be identifying other locations which might not have already come to your attention and, and sort of try and understand how long we knew about this location prior to the fire.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Well, thank you all. This is, this is very helpful information. And so I have a question for, for you about the cleanups. And I think you've responded to this before. I'd just like you to repeat it for the latest information. I'm getting a lot of calls from constituents just asking about the schedule, and I just wanted to confirm that, as I understand it, we are doing monthly cleanups, but, and those are in, and those overlap, or not overlap, but that TechDOT is also doing weekly cleanups, and these are in the areas that are identified. Is that, am I right about that?
Almost.
Okay.
So the underpass cleanups are happening twice a month.
Okay. The city's doing them twice a month?
That's correct. But at the locations where TechDOT is doing monthly cleanups, we're offsetting that with an additional cleanup as well. So all the cleanups are still happening twice per month. Some locations, we're performing both cleanups, and at other locations, the state's performing one and we're performing the second.
So there aren't weekly cleanups? I had understood there were weekly cleanups.
For the litter and debris cleanups, those are happening twice weekly. So those will continue, and we're actually at the process of evaluating a couple of the sites to see if they might be better served to go to three times per week. We have a couple of sites that seem to have more activity with litter, so we're, we're kind of reassessing those.
Oh, okay. So, all right. So just repeat for me one more time to make sure I've got it clear. So the litter cleanups are twice a week?
Correct.
And the other cleanups are twice a month?
That is correct.
Okay. And does, and where are you all at on the sides of the freeway?
In response to that, council member, you asked us to take a look at those locations. So we connected with TechDOT, and as of last week, TechDOT did deploy resources to clean up those areas adjacent and alongside the, the areas near the overpasses and underpasses. And so they did respond, and they are cleaning those up. The new contract, the current contract that we're using to clean is up for renewal soon, and so we're also going to look at adding that scope to the new contract as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have just a quick follow-up. So you said TechDOT is cleaning those areas up now, but then we will add a scope, so we will take over the cleanup and TechDOT will?
No, I'm not saying that. What I want to do is get a better understanding of what the overall agreement is with them. But we want to have the ability to do it if we need it to.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Tovo?
To return to the point about coordination. Mr. Snipes, you said you were looking for ways of coordinating, and I may not have, ways of coordinating with our outreach teams to make sure that you are aware of some of the places they may be visiting and interacting with individuals that would be appropriate for a cleanup. I guess in some of the media reports yesterday, some of our firefighters indicated that they had been out to this particular site multiple times. And so I don't know whether that's a question for you, ACM Shorter, about how we, how we make sure that our city personnel who are visiting sites and responding to emergency calls are also aware that some of that, that it would be useful to get that information back. I mean, in one of the reports, it sounded as if the firefighters had some concerns about, about, about this. Well, I don't want to characterize it.
Right.
But in any case, that would have been good information to come back. And, and is it coming back and finding its way to you? Or what, what are your strategies for making sure that that information transfer happens in the future?
Sure. Appreciate the question very much. This is exactly the reason why we have formed this internal working group that, that ultimately our public safety teams, our service delivery, homeless service delivery teams and our cleanup teams, we are currently meeting every week. This, this is an area where we need to make sure that if we are providing services, even if it's a non-government entity, we need to make sure that there's information and intelligence coming back to this group around where there is an opportunity for cleanup. So this was, this was obviously one, one area where we, we have an opportunity to, to do better and we certainly will. We were talking yesterday about, about how we make sure that outside of the weekly meetings, that the teams are making, are coordinating operationally. And so that's where there is improvement and will be improvement.
And certainly if there are safety issues that our responders are noting out there, I hope there's also a way to, to work with the outreach providers or others to, to try to address some of those safety issues.
Sure.
Earlier.
It's important, it's important. So each one of our various departments play a very important and key role in the provision of services and how we make sure that that information translates from one public safety agency, for example, to our cleanup effort is something that we need to make sure we get right. I don't want to necessarily say that our entire organization knew about this encampment as it's clear that our encampment, our encampment cleanup teams did not. And so where we need to improve and we will improve is how we get that information back and then make sure that it is really funneled across our enterprise.
Great. Thank you for continuing to, to improve and strengthen our, our processes.
Sure.
You had mentioned before a dashboard.
I did.
Would you mind telling us again where and how we receive that in our council office?
Sure. So the last time we were together at our working session, the communications team, and I'm not sure if Representative is, is here, but we, we talked about different formats and frames for a specific dashboard. Fantastic. And so in that time, we've begun the process of reaching out to council offices and I'll turn over to Laura for a follow-up.
I just checked with my staff and I don't, none of them were particularly familiar. I don't, I'm not sure. I may have misunderstood. Did you say you sent out a, a link that we all have a link to provide feedback about? Or is it more informal?
No, no, we're going to, we're going to come to your office and, and, yeah.
Gotcha. I missed that timing. I thought, I thought it had already arrived and we were supposed to be in the feedback process, but we'll, we'll await that conversation. Thanks.
We are in the process. We are sort of, yes.
Are there any other questions?
Not a question so much as a statement. And you probably can speak to this with your experiences being a firefighter and my experience with being married to one for almost as long as he's been in, almost two decades. That encampment's been there for decades. And so during the course of these conversations, I think it's most important to include the people whose boots are on the ground. And I'm not certain how we would, you know, create a communication system there, but you know, battalion chiefs, you know, folks who aren't fighting fires in the woods probably couldn't provide you that information as well as firefighters and tailboards can. So I wonder if that would be an important consideration, like who are the paramedics and firefighters who are actually going into the woods? They can tell you where encampments are that you wouldn't see or know about otherwise. So just something to consider.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was, I thought about commenting on, on that exact thing that as we've been having this homelessness discussion, that's one thing I've said is this is not new. I was a firefighter from 2001 to 2007 and we've been going to homeless camps in the 360 area for, since then. So it's medical calls, it's people see smoke and they're, you know, we would usually confirm are they warming or cooking fires? And then they were allowed. And so, yeah, firefighters know where those, where those camps are.
I think one immediate improvement here is that we can begin to invite AFD to our weekly working group meetings.
I think that's all. Thank you for these, thank you for the updates. Did you have a closing there?
No.
Okay. So the only thing left on our work session agenda, we're not having an executive session. The only thing left is the discussion on the land development code, which is not supposed to start until one o'clock. The mayor should be back by that time. I'm not sure of what the processes I was going to talk about, if I was running the meeting, I was going to talk about what, what we were going to do, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the mayor about what that process will be like. I'm happy to discuss comments on what, on what others would, would like that to look like. Councilmember Tovo? So the first question I have, I guess, is our executive sessions. There were, there's at least one on there that I regard as extremely timely. And so I wasn't aware, in fact, I spoke with you, city manager, at late last week and it was still on the agenda at that point. So I'm not sure who and how and, and how, why it's not on our agenda for today.
Councilmember, I think just because we don't have the full dais, we're going to wait till Thursday.
Okay. Is, is the mayor coming later? Could we take a brief break and try to move on to executive session?
Mayor, the mayor is supposed to be here. I, I also would, would, I don't know if you're talking about the ACE?
Well, there are two. One is the ACE, the other is POM. And, you know, I don't know, I mean, it looks as if we have a pretty easy agenda on Thursday, but if things get, you know, if we get very bogged down in the morning, then there's a possibility, I have a very short day on Thursday. I'm going to be, I'm going to need to leave the, the meeting early as I've indicated, as early as the first week of December. And so, you know, I'm also, I'm very interested in ACE. I'm also interested in POM, having led on several of those resolutions related to it and given that it's in my district. And so, you know, it's important to me to be here for that conversation. And it is, as I said, very timely. I think the county commissioners may have an item on their agenda today related to POM. And so again, it's just a surprise to me that we're not taking it up until Thursday. That wasn't communicated back to me and that is of concern as well. It, I don't, hopefully we'll have time on Thursday to take it up. But again, it's timely as of today. So.
Councilmember Tovo, why don't we, in this break, I agree that we, we need to have it. So why don't we, in this break, find out what time the mayor's coming back and regardless, plan to have that today at some point?
That sounds good to me, Mayor Portem. The other, and I think the ACE too, in preparation for Thursday is a useful conversation to have today rather than on Thursdays. So thank you for that. And I, if it's, is our afternoon work session part of this one? Okay, great. So I have a question about what time, we don't have an end time scheduled for today or tomorrow. And I wondered if we could get a sense of what our expectations are. I know some of us have probably children we have to pick up at certain times and whatnot. So we just have to have a clear sense of, of whether we're going until, whether we're, whether we're going until we're done today. And it could go late into the night. And if so, if we could agree on a break time, that would be great. Or if we're intending to, to end earlier.
I had it in my calendar till five, I believe. So that's when I planned it. I, I plan to leave at five. Is that everybody else's expectation? That's, it looks like it's everybody's expectation to be over five.
Okay, thanks. Same tomorrow. Again, in, in our communication, I think my staff may have asked, it was stated that there was no end time, that staff weren't going to apply an end time to it. And so it's just made scheduling other things a little challenging. But if today end time is five, is that our end time for tomorrow as well? End time is a five?
Looks like it's for five tomorrow as well.
Was that, can you help me understand how that arrived on your calendar at five? Because again, I think the literature we received had it as no end time. I mean, I'm happy to hear it.
I don't manage my calendar, so I can't answer that.
I don't think that was formal or official, but I think that, but that was just what was getting blocked. Yeah. Some, some, that might've been indicating to us that when we discussed this, that we suggest five. I think it's more of a suggestion in my calendar.
Okay. Thanks.
I think it might've been on the message board post that the mayor, I'm trying to get to the message board, but I believe the mayor had posted some end times, but we, I believe we still need some clarity for next week on end times. Again, if we have children and we have staff who have children, we have to know what we're planning for and just having these random meetings that could go late is challenging.
And just to follow up, I'm looking at the message board post. It didn't say either. So it does, you know, again, I have like three contingency plans with my children for today because I wasn't sure. So it would super be, it would be helpful if we could figure this stuff out in advance.
So let's have that discussion when we reconvene about, at times when we come back, when everybody should be here. That sounds good. All right. I, since we're on the subject, I unfortunately will not be here tomorrow. I have a, a family members having a medical procedure that I would like to be at. So I will be gone Wednesday.